Good evening, residents, or I should say, good afternoon, residents of Everett. I'd like to welcome you all to the Incola Order, the Everett City Council meeting of July 23rd, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit our website at everwa/citycouncil. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Franklin, here. Councilmember Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Fossey?
Excused.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Vogely?
Here.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask Vice President Zarlingo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and this time I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read the land acknowledgement.
The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahoshia people and their successors, the Talalup tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted fish, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you very much. So on to old business. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes for July 16th, 2025?
Councilor Ryan, so moves.
Second.
Motion and seconds been made. Clerk, please take the role.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, and well, good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon. To start things off, I'd like to invite Chief DeMarco forward to share a little bit about the very unusual and unfortunate incident of our fire engine being stolen over the last weekend.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Dave DeMarco, Everett's Fire Chief. I have a few written comments I'd like to share with you. "The sight and sounds of a fire engine in a community of the same meaning all around the world. Help is coming." "For the first time in 133 years in the city of Everett, due to the actions of a criminal that was not true last Friday." "Everett Fire currently manages over 27,000 emergency incidents every year. We do this professionally and effectively, 70 times a day at least, without incident or fanfare. This has been a sentinel event, not just for us, but for the fire service across the country." "Today, I'm going to summarize the detailed written update that council received yesterday afternoon, and immediately following this meeting, we're going to release that update to the community." "So what happened? The criminal accessed our idling fire engine while parked at an emergency incident. It was parked in the roadway, blocking traffic with the emergency lights on, as is expected by department policy." "So how did this happen? Fire engines are not passenger vehicles. They aren't equipped with keys or an ignition or a braking system that an untrained person would even be able to recognize. Yet, the perpetrator managed to release the brakes, put the unit in gear, and then overcome an immobilization device at the wheels." "Why did this happen? We may never know the criminal's intent, but I'm very confident in our police department, and I'm hopeful that officers will have an opportunity to discuss this at length with the perpetrator." "Fire apparatus are left idling by design. They are essentially a mobile fire station with complex systems, tools, and equipment all required to support emergency operations. They require continuous power to do so. It's common practice locally, regionally, and nationally to leave them idling at emergency incidents." "So what is being done? We have implemented a series of temporary measures to improve fleet security, and I'll be happy to details for you, those for you in private, but I'm not going to share those publicly. For the long term, we're researching available engineering options to prevent this from happening again, but it's important to understand that this is not as simple as just installing a keypad or a door lock. It's also not a cost issue. Any effort to insert additional layers of protection in emergency vehicles adds to the risk of mechanical failure at a crucial moment. These are not utility trucks. They're not delivery vans. They cannot fail, and so we must be careful and deliberate about how we proceed. In the meantime, I have personally attempted to visit with each affected property owner. For those we couldn't find, we're contacting by mail to offer an opportunity to sit down and talk." "What's our current fleet status? The reserve engine was immediately activated after the crash, so there's been no gaps in emergency services in the community. The damaged engine is currently being evaluated for repairs by specialists, and a final determination on repairability and cost will take some time, but we'll have that soon. The fire engine market is extremely difficult nationally. Prices have doubled in just the last five years. Due to good foresight by the mayor and this council, and purely by coincidence, we ordered replacements for our two oldest fire engines years ago, and they happened to arrive in Mount Vernon last week. We expect to put them in service in August, and so there will be no fleet shortfall. The mayor and council can further be credited with public face safety foresight planning, as we have already ordered three additional replacement engines due to arrive in 2028. The fire service is one of the best examples of effective local government. The community pools its resources to protect each other in the event of an emergency. If you call us, we will come, no matter what. And a fire engine is a symbol of neighbors helping neighbors. So while I can't explain or apologize for the senseless act of a criminal, I'm still very sorry that this happened. And I want to reassure the community that every Everett firefighter is working hard to make sure nothing like this ever happens again. Thank you."
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief, council?
Councilmember Bader?
Yeah, I mean, this might be murder or city attorney, but if we find, assuming we do find the person who stole it, do they face any additional penalties because they stole a public vehicle or a public safety vehicle, you know? If you don't, I understand, but just asking that question.
It's okay. It's structured to you, Ramsey. Would there be special penalties for this particular offense because they stole an emergency vehicle, or would it be the same as stealing any other vehicle?
I will have to look into that. I'm not sure. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, no. Thank you, chiefs. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to invite Chief Derris Ford, because he's going to give us an update on police staffing. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I want to take an opportunity to provide an update on staffing at the Everett Police Department and possibly clear up some misconceptions I've seen out there. While law enforcement agencies across the country are facing recruitment and retention challenges, I'm proud to share that the Everett Police Department is not only keeping pace, but they're, we're leading the way in many areas. Start with some numbers. We currently have 19 sworn FTE vacancies, but it's important to remember that 16 positions were added through federal COPS grants in 2022 and 2023. When measured against our previous baseline of 206 officers, which was from 2016 to 2021, our staffing gap would only be five officers today, which means we'd be 97% staffed, one of the strongest positions in the region. As an additional bit of positive news, we hired an officer last week in a start date of July 28th, which will bring our vacancy number to 18. Even more encouraging, in a snapshot at the beginning of July, we had 81 officers assigned to patrol. While that number can go up and down depending on when we measure it and on a variety of factors, that's the highest number that we've seen in over a decade. That increased presence is making measurable difference in service delivery, officer safety, and community engagement. We now have six officers in our community bicycle unit, plus a sergeant, and I'm sure many of you have seen them out patrolling. That's more officers than we've ever had in that unit. We also recently filled another motorcycle position. So we have two officers out enforcing traffic laws and helping our traveling community keep safe. Since 2015, we've hired 182 officers, demonstrating consistent recruitment success and the department's ability to remain competitive in a very difficult and challenging labor market. We're on track to process 1,000 background investigations this year. In comparison, we process 420, 20. That's due to improvements in efficiency in several areas, some of which include a second polygrapher, weekly certifications of our hiring list, when we used to do it quarterly, I think, digitized reference checks, so we can do them via computers, and remote interviews for our out-of-state and outer-area candidates. And here's a reality that I'm not sure everyone realizes. If we hired everyone that applied to be an Everett police officer, we could fill every vacancy tomorrow. But we don't. We don't do that. Because we screen out individuals who have disqualifying backgrounds or who do not align with the culture and professionalism of our department. We are committed to building a department that is not only fully staffed, but properly staffed in the way that our community appreciates. We are seeing more people today interested in our profession, particularly from diverse backgrounds, and they are considering a law enforcement career as more viable and meaningful than just even a few years ago. Our full-time recruiter has led a process that engages the entire community in new and unique ways, and our social media approach is reflective of that. An example of our diversity, between May 2023 and May 2024, we received 536 applications. Nearly 40% of those applicants were BIPOC. One-third of the female applicants that are applying are from underrepresented racial groups. This shows that our message and our approach is resonating throughout the community, and we're connecting with the next generation of officers. In 2024, nine of the 16 officers we hired were BIPOC, which is 56% of our hires last year. We haven't had percentages like that ever. It's important to note that we don't hire people because they are from a demographic. We actively invest in hiring from all parts of our community, from all demographics, and those demographics and those people that we hire represent the best of the best, as far as I'm concerned. Our recruiting efforts are wide-ranging and intentional. Some examples, schools and universities, military installations such as the Navy Base here and Joint Base Lewis McCord, and we get involved in a lot of community events. Nubian Jam, back-to-school nights, hockey games, concerts, parades, three-on-three basketball downtown, Cafecito Con La Policia, On Patrol Live, and lots of other examples. Instagram and Facebook campaigns, they focus on younger audiences and people from all corners of our community and beyond, including those that were unrepresented in policing in the past. We're not just filling positions, we're building a department that reflects and serves everyone. We're also a regional leader in staffing. And here's how Everett compares to the sworn staffing per 1,000, I'm sorry, per 1,000 residents. It's an old metric that they use commonly to compare one department to another. Kent, for example, has 1.2 officers per thousand. Bellingham has 1.37. Bellevue has 1.35. Tacoma has 1.64, and Everett has 1.96, significantly higher. When we include all police personnel, Everett leads it again at 2.3 department members per 1,000. So even with 19 listed vacancies, if we consider the COPS grant expansion, we're effectively, like I mentioned, five positions down, or 2.4%. If we include the positions from the COPS hiring grant, we're down 9.1% of our staffing. Bellevue's down 16%, Renton's down 13%, and Seattle's over 30% last time we checked. In addition to the high-ranked successes that we've seen, we're also investing in tools that help our officers work smarter and reduce their workload. This includes drones as a first responder, automated license plate reading cameras, and internal systems that reduce the administrative process of what we do. These technologies allow us to stretch existing resources, improve officer efficiency, and ensure high-quality service to the public. And I think they're probably pretty good recruiters, too, because people want to work at departments that have technology. So in closing, and in summary, we've hired 182 officers since 2015, and we're over 97% staffed against our pre-grant benchmark. Our patrol staffing is at a 10-year high. We're processing more backgrounds faster than ever with a firm commitment to hiring only those who meet our high standards and fit within our culture. We're seeing renewed interest in law enforcement with diverse applicant pools. And Everett leads the region in staffing ratios and service innovation. I hope that provides a little bit of clarity on our staffing situation. We really appreciate council's continued support in helping us hire the best officers we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief Derris. I just wanted to just publicly thank you for your incredible leadership of this department. I'm very proud of the work that you all do. I had the opportunity yesterday to go to the STEM Police Academy and say hi to all the young people that were learning about how STEM, as it relates to policing, and it was great to see a vibrant group of young people that may be our future recruits, but just interested in learning and really, you and our recruiter and all of our leadership has just done an incredible job. Thank you. And then, in addition to the staffing and police, I also want to just remind folks we also have our alternative response. So it's not all public safety, isn't all first responders, police, and fire. We have our social workers that we deploy now as well, which is a really important part of how we're providing safety network for the community. So thanks for that update. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we have questions here. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. With Tuesday's first graduation of the Regional Training Academy, I was hoping you could touch a little bit more on how the opening of that facility and just how that facility is going to help with the workforce pipeline for the department, and especially how EPD has assigned an officer to work there to help with opening that pipeline. I feel like that's a key component of filling vacancies in the future.
I think it is as well. We do have a tac officer signed up there, Andrew Shuck. He's great. We also send our staff up there to do a lot of the training. So we see officers in the academy, the people that are in this region go to that police academy. There's some examples of when they might not, but for the most part, that's where they'll go. We get a set number of positions within each academy class, and we start beginning to build that culture and that professionalism and their skill set from the very beginning. It's nice. We even had a candidate, an applicant, who was all the way through to an offer of employment, sorry, who said that he didn't want to go to Burien, and that if he was going to be sent to Burien, to the traditional police academy that most of us have been through, that he didn't want a job here. He wanted to go locally. And when you think about families, that's huge, right? You're not going all the way down there, spending the week in Burien, coming back on weekends. You actually go home every night. So I could probably talk a lot more about it, but it's very important.
Great. So my understanding that previous assignments to the training academy, there was only one or two slots that was dedicated specifically for Everett PD, but now with the new facility, there's more designated spots because we have a tac officer assigned up there. Is that correct?
The second part's correct. The first part, we never knew when we were going to get in, and sometimes that wait would be very long. Having only one academy and not having the regional academies meant sometimes we were waiting up to a year for a spot. We're getting, I think we have seven in the class that's going to start after this one graduates. It's a huge number, and they lean on each other throughout the process, too, and help them succeed, help themselves succeed.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Tui?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about, you know, since I started on council, I know we've struggled for years trying to diversify it, how to grow and how to hire. And I think that the team has done an amazing job. When I see the diversity over the years, it's just really amazing, and it really, I know that was a huge goal of Chief Templeman at the time, to really make it look like, you know, try to match our community. And so I just want to just commend everybody, and you've continued that work, too, and it really shows. And I really appreciate that, so.
He taught me well. And yeah, and it makes sense. It really makes sense. When people show up at your door, you want them to look like they're from the community where they work, and we're getting there. We're still not, overall, our numbers aren't good, but we're going the right direction when it comes to that.
Okay, questions? Councilor Bader?
Thanks. Chief, these might be answers for a later time, but two, and these are reflective, I think, maybe of my time four years ago, but one, you know, signing bonuses, seems like those have waxed and waned or where they are, you know, even compared to our region, and so at some point, I'd like to, if you can give me some information on where we are relative to peer agencies. Are those still a thing? Does it still matter?
It's still a thing. One of the first things I did when I took over my role as police chief is got rid of the signing bonus. I think I want officers that want to come here and work at a great department. I don't want people to come here because they want money. And we've done it, and we've got some great officers as part of that program. But I believe that policing is a really honorable, respectable profession, and the way that we recruit people is by going out there, exposing who we are. That was one of the reasons we did On Patrol Live, so people saw the way we did business. And what we're seeing is that people could go to a lot of departments, including Seattle, which I think has one of the highest signing bonuses in the region, but they're still coming here.
Very good. And then the second question, again, might be reflective more four years ago, but that I've heard comments, not just from our agency, but other agencies, too, that it's more challenging to hire in Washington State than other states. So at some point, I'd be curious to find out what the, you know, how we compare the environment. Again, if it doesn't necessarily need an answer now, but.
Well, I'll give you one now, and I'm lucky enough to have been around this profession for 30 years, and I have resources across the country. There's not a place in the United States where they're not challenged by recruiting and getting officers.
Councilor Vogely?
Thank you very much for all of that. Like, as most people know, I have strong opinions about law enforcement and accountability. And since I've been, even previous to me starting here on council and talking with Chief Templeman at the time and being involved in this area and situation, I'm consistently impressed, and I just want to say that out loud because every time I've seen Everett police or heard, most of the times I've heard about Everett police has been, you all are doing a good job. And when I see some other folks in our jurisdiction, I don't have that same impression. So, thank you. And I didn't get the percentages because maybe you didn't give them, but I think in stark contrast to the FBI, which has 75% men and 80% of them are white, we're doing a very good job at looking more like the population that we represent. So thank you for bringing that up. That is all.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief.
No further comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Chief DeMarco. Okay, it's now public comments, which includes written comments. Under our rules, if you come here to speak, please state your name and the city of residence. It's required to be part of the council records. Good afternoon, Angie. Do you have anything?
Good afternoon, President Schwab. We have no written comments and no one signed up for public comment.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to come forward and speak? Okay, all right, we're good. On to council comments. We'll start with Vice President Zarlingo.
Well, one quick note with respect to the police side, this is not a question, so I didn't make it then, but I do recall in the past hearing that the city of Kent was proud of being fully staffed, but they were also paying the highest wages in the region. And then almost immediately after that, we're looking for additional funds, I think, from the state to try to increase their staffing because, though they were "fully staffed" in quotes, they weren't staffed at the level that they wanted to be. So I appreciate the efforts of our department, and especially have been remarked a couple of times on both the qualifications and the diversity of the candidates we have, the people we've been swearing in. Well, just two quick things. Snohomish County Cities, last Thursday, I attended the meeting of Snohomish County Cities Organization. We heard about the discussion of federal government plans to end FEMA and push the responsibility for emergency response to states and to cities increasingly. We heard the latest about the implications for emergency preparedness from that department at the county and what elected officials can do. We also heard about county resources and the 24-hour availability of a duty officer as a point of contact. So there are preparations that way, but they can't do everything, especially in major emergencies. So in more general terms, this was a reminder we should all consider setting up an emergency cache of water and basic food and supplies, and in the case of natural disaster, to help both ourselves and our neighbors. In the past, the recommendation was to have supplies for several days. Now I think it's really sort of a couple of weeks. And this is a great opportunity, if you haven't done already, to talk with your neighbors about the kinds of resources you might have and things you could do to help share that kind of load and be more disaster resistant. And then lastly, each year, local home builders work with Don Lumber to build wheelchair ramps. They organize through the Master Builders Organization and build nearly, that group at any rate, others do as well, to build nearly two dozen of those during the year. On Saturday, I joined Council President Schwab, Councilmember Bader, Mayor Franklin, and others to pitch in on a ramp here in Everett. Trevor Johnson and Blackwood Builders provided the skills and coordination. Don Lumber supplied the materials. President Schwab is pretty skilled with a saw, but I've got him beat when a shovel is the essential tool. I should also, though, make it clear that Blackwood Builders did the real work to make this happen, and I look forward to working with them again to help those who need these kinds of access improvements to stay and function well in their homes.
Thank you, Councilmember Bader.
I think so. President, no report and no comments today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Yesterday, I attended the historic commission meeting where they're going over their work plan for the year. Good discussion. I also wanted to just give two reminders. One, Everett Transit has a survey open right now regarding their long-range plan, and so they're asking for the public to provide input on routes and which routes they'd like to see, stations, and whatnot. So the survey is open until, I believe, July 31st. So if you're an active transit rider or you aspire to be one, I recommend filling out the surveys that you can be part of the long-range planning process. A year or two ago, I had initiated the $100,000 for neighborhood grants through our ARPA and our COVID recovery dollars. And so I just wanted to give a friendly reminder to our neighborhood associations out there that those proposals are due at the end of the month. So I know, at least from the neighborhood associations I've been attending, it's been an active conversation with neighborhood association attendees on how to spend those dollars. So I just wanted to send a friendly reminder to get those proposals in by the end of the month so we can be sure to award your proposals. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Vogely?
Thank you. I was at the tac meeting and also found out about that transit. So thank you for putting that out there. I don't know what the words were. I'm looking at the email. Anyways, I was also able to attend a Unidos event with the author, Mike German, Policing White Supremacy: The Enemy Within. And so that's where I got that 75% men, 80% white bit for the chief earlier. There was a whole lot more very interesting information, and so and saw quite a few community members there as well. So if you have any questions about that, you can ask me afterwards or look them up, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tui.
No comment today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. How about from the administration? Lori, you have?
No updates today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. From our city attorney's office?
A couple of things. First, we're asking for a five-minute executive session based on RCW 423110 sub 1 sub I to discuss legal issues with possible action to follow. Second, we had received numerous questions regarding for our candidates for district position and the six-month residency requirement in the city charter. We've determined that the county doesn't, their declaration of candidacy does not address our charter conditions. So we are going to be sending out a letter today to candidates asking to confirm that they meet the six-month residency requirement. So for those of you who are running for office, you'll be getting a letter from us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so moving on to our consent items. We have three consent items. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Bader, so moves.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion and seconds been made. Clerk, please take the role.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number four, proposed action item, Council Bill 2507-40, first reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Lions Park Skate Dot, Fund 354, Program 098, to accumulate all design permitting and construction costs for the project in the amount of $360,000. Third and final reading, August 13th, 2025. Is there any question? Is there a presentation? Just questions?
No, not on this item.
Okay. Is there any questions from council? Councilmember Vogely?
It's not a question, a comment. I've heard about skate dots a lot from being on the Parks Board, and I am very encouraged and excited that one is finally being, oh, the money will hopefully be available to accumulate. available to accumulate all design and permitting and construction costs. So I just yay, that's my comment.
Okay, excellent. Councilor Zarlingo?
Just one quick question. I remember talking and hearing about a bit about skate dots a year and a half, two years ago. And it sounds to me like this is happening maybe a little bit quicker than we than we were thinking it might a year or two ago.
Bob Leonard, Parks and Facilities. We have been talking about the skate dot specifically Alliance for quite a while. One of the things we were waiting on was we we applied for some state RCO grants. And we were just waiting to find out the status of that before we went forward. But now that we know the status, feel like it's a good time to start the actual construction.
And do you have a sense of when that might be approximately? I understand there are uncertainties in this.
Construction?
Yeah.
I believe it's going to start this fall.
Oh, great. Folks in Pinehurst Beverly Park will be happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no questions, comments. We'll move on and that will be on the agenda next week or in two weeks, actually. I might, moving on to action item number five, concur with the mayor's reappointment of the hearing examiner and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two to personal services contract with Sharon Rice as the land use and code enforcement hearing examiner for a term of four years beginning August first, two thousand twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconds been made. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to item number six. We have two briefings. The first one will begin with South Everett Economic Development Strategy Report.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Dan Ernesti is here, our Economic Development Director, along with a couple of the consultants that we're working with. And so Dan, I'll let you introduce them.
This is how you turn on the microphone, in case you're wondering. So good to be here. I'm running on apple fritters today because today is celebrate South Everett Day. I've been working with a great consulting team to develop and identify an economic development strategy for South Everett for us to use to carry forward in our work there. And I'd like to just introduce Morgan Shook, who is one of the principal of the Seattle Office of Eco Northwest and Tina Flosky. Yes, from Lisk, who has been working with us on a number of different initiatives, but Eco Northwest use less services to do community outreach in South Everett for this project as well. The subtitle that I've put for this is Rooted Ownership and Growing Opportunity. That's a good way to summarize where we're where we're headed with this. But first, let's talk about South Everett. The area that we identified for South Everett is larger than the area that is in the incorporated part of Everett in the south.
It's a powerpoint setting. It picks it up and then change it in the seventies.
It's fine.
It's my understanding that AI notes for public meetings are a public records. Ramsey could probably fill in the rest of that sentence.
Not dictate. Any suggestions?
Speech to text.
This is Dan talking to see if my voice comes up. Angie is the best. The South Everett area that we're talking about is bounded on the east by I five. On the west by Airport Road goes down to one twenty-eighth and on the north side, five SR five twenty-six, which is basically adjacent to Casino Road. So it's a slightly larger area. It's all in our urban growth area. And the reason that we chose this slightly larger area is because it all has the same kind of feel economically and and is cohesive area. But I just want to point that out at the beginning. We're not talking about Southwest Everett, which is our manufacturing industrial center. We're not talking about over Silver Lake, even though truly it is in the south, but it's just in this this one area. We've had the focused area effort here from the time that I came to the city in two thousand eighteen with a list of different initiatives that are highlighted here. And the one that started in December of two thousand twenty-three is the South Everett Economic Development Strategy. Where we advertise using ARPA funds for a consultant, Eco Northwest and Lisk were selected. We gave a, this group gave a council update in October and then the report was completed in May. The characteristics of a good economic development strategy are that it's grounded in our community, maximizes assets and resources. And it catalyzes sustainable growth. So growth that can really carry us through years and years and even decades. Has focused recommendations, doesn't go off in a lot of different tangents or is too many different things and has a broad group of implementation partners, as you will see from this. The city really can't do everything here. And so we need to to work with others to work on that. So how did we get here? I'm going to turn it over to Morgan and Tina for for this part.
Certainly. And I think I'll just pick up from what Dan said. I'm sorry. Oh, is this not working? Oh, okay. I'll pick up on what Dan said here. And I think building a great plan is kind of requires a very comprehensive sort of way to look at the problem, the challenges, opportunities, threats, right? And our team, and having done this learns that we want to, to the extent that we can, ground this in great information. We've got a lot of government data. We've got a lot of third party data. It's much more ubiquitous today than it has been in the past. And so we really want to harvest that, to understand kind of that. But we know that doesn't give us the complete picture, right? We really then want to sort of make sure we talk to our community partners and build on a lot of the great engagement that's been done in the area, a lot of it by Lisk, and use those as sort of foundations to build this plan. And I think I'll just echo something Dan told us two years ago, like success for here is really to have something that he can put in the city, his work plan, right? A set of projects, a set of ideas that can be advanced, that have thorough grounding, some consensus within the community and clear definition on sort of how to advance those those items. So before we talk a little bit about sort of the plan, I just want to kind of highlight a couple of things that Dan said. Let's go to the next slide. In talking about South Everett, right, we have an area that is much more expansive than the current municipal boundaries that include the unincorporated area that's associated with the city. And a few things that really kind of note here, like we are really talking about an area that is characteristically different, not just from the city, but from the county as a whole. And so we're talking about, one, a very large area. So the population in this in this that the area that Dan showed would, if it was part of the city, cover forty-four percent. So half roughly half of the city. And that's a big number because it's a big area. But the other two things that really keep in mind here, we're talking about a population too that is much more diverse than the city's demographics. It is younger, both by age, both by opposition, but also the absence of sort of a lot of older people. So you just think we have a much larger household sizes. So much more younger people that are working years, much more people in starting in that sort of key family area. And with that, right, we also know that they tend to be much more renters, right? Because there aren't as many owner shop opportunities there. And because we have a lot of renters, we also have a lot of the attendant issues that renters have been facing over the last, you know, decade and a half, particularly around our housing affordability crisis. That is compounded by the fact that we have mostly households here that aren't making as much as the city overall. And so so I think just to help color a lot of this conversation here, we're talking, when we talk about South Everett, it's not just a geography, but there is a sort of proximate concentration of population that is distinctly different, you know, on average than what we see in the rest of the city. So so I'll talk a little bit about some key things going forward, but I want to make sure I introduce Tina at at Lisk and to talk a little bit about the engagement piece here that was part of our plan making process.
I just want to say I'm so grateful to have been included on this team and in this work because of how integrated this is with all of the things Lisk has been doing in South Everett over the last three years. And so just such an important opportunity to make sure that we're building upon some of the existing work that we've done and integrating that into an overall plan for the neighborhoods. So really grateful to be a part of this. We engaged stakeholders in a variety of ways. We did, we pulled together stakeholders around workforce development, which included some of the skill building organizations like the community colleges and goodwill, major employers like Boeing and Kaiser Permanente and social service providers who are helping to build a pipeline with low income folks into better job opportunities and talked a lot about workforce. We also did in-person outreach to small businesses in South Everett to a variety of largely retail and service small businesses, including restaurants, laundromats, motels, you know, bodegas and groceries, and got some really good feedback from folks about the things that they are happy about and the things they're concerned about. And then we we also met with city staff and thinking about some longer term development opportunities in the community and just thinking about, you know, how does that fit within the longer term plan for the neighborhood? We also, outside of this particular process, were able to integrate some other outreach that we had done within the community. So in the course of our other projects, we have been meeting with community residents. And so we were able to take some of the feedback that we heard from that and integrated into this report as well, so that we're so that we're really representing a diverse set of voices.
All right. So let's go to the next slide here. So just the, you know, things to hit on again, right? We are a younger, more diverse, lower income population. We have a predominant ownership, or sorry, household structure that is geared towards renting. Many businesses, right, have talked about sort of the, sorry, not talked about sort of the mismatch between the opportunities that are available in the community relative to the skills that are here. And particularly, those are most pronounced in some of the higher paying, more high skilled jobs like in aerospace and other technology manufacturing pieces. And I want to kind of draw your attention to two two images. Let's go to the next slide, Dan. So I think this here, I think will help you understand, I think, two big themes that we, as part of our analysis. And and what you see on the left is the amount of employment capacity. So think of it as basically development sites that may be underutilized, that we would think potentially, given your zoning and where the economy will go, are going to be able to host much more employment jobs. And then on the right, what you see is the same picture for housing. And I'll just say from a regional perspective, this region, this is the study area, has some of the highest concentration of future capacity for both jobs and housing. And so this is, one, a wonderful opportunity, given the questions we're contemplating around homeownership, population growth, as well as sort of economic development and jobs. And so so it is both kind of a great opportunity, but then given sort of the sort of mix of renters and lower income households, it's also a potential threat, right? Particularly around, you know, issues around economic displacement. So those two pieces, I think, get really exemplified in in a map like this. Let's go to the next piece. To help sort of drill that down, this is just a quick chart that shows basically where people live and what jobs they go. And so think of it as basically the vast majority of people who live here are going somewhere else for their job. The vast majority of people who work in the area are coming in from somewhere else. And a very small minority of folks are actually living and working in the community. You see this in a lot of communities that potentially are a little more residential, but I would say, given the unique mix that's in South Everett, these are fairly high measures. And so so I would say from a sort of data analytics piece, what we're trying to want to think about the next ten years is how do we bend that curve a little bit, right? How can people who are living here also find ways to have, you know, gain full employment? How can people who are currently living here and having to have great longer commutes? And that was actually something we saw, we see some of the longest commutes coming out of this neighborhood, people working elsewhere in the county. How can we potentially provide more opportunity close in? And then, right, continue, you know, as a place of employment, can you make it also a place where other folks in within the city of Everett and Snohomish County continue to come and work places like obviously Boeing and other large regional employers? And so so one of the things when we think about sort of the current situation and what are we trying to address? This dual nature around opportunity, potential displacement, but also sort of trying to bend the curve a little bit, like getting people to kind of live and work where they sort of work where they live is something we're trying to figure out as part of the strategy. So let's go to the next slide. So I'll turn over to Tina to talk about some of the things that we heard back from the community as part of our engagement.
Yeah, we we heard that, I think, to Morgan's point, that there's a real desire and a need for for better pipeline from the folks who live in the neighborhood into those highly skilled trade jobs, apprenticeships. A really important component around making sure we're supporting people's soft skill development and then the the need for wraparound support, including childcare, housing stability, transportation, to make sure that our folks who maybe come from more vulnerable communities and lower income communities can actually access and persist within those training programs. We heard from the businesses that there are some concerns about public safety, especially around vandalism and kind of just making sure that people feel safe in the space in in South Everett. They also, I think, I think people in South Everett, especially the small business owners, don't feel very comfortable navigating the city's systems, especially around permitting. And really, we're unaware of resources available to help support and grow their businesses. We also talked about the desire around local ownership. So especially as we're continuing to see real estate pressure and change in the neighborhood due to investments such as light rail. How do the folks who live in the neighborhood now benefit from those? And how do they have an ownership stake in what's happening in their neighborhood? And that includes both ownership of commercial and also residential property? How do we start to to help to cultivate those opportunities for people and then be able to support that implementation?
So let's go to the next slide here. So we tried to boil this up into, you know, a classic strategic planning kind of framework. Your classic SWOT analysis of strengths, challenges, opportunities and threats. And I want to actually kind of mostly focus in here, since I talked a little bit about some of the strengths and challenges on the opportunities. And Tina mentioned it here. One of the things that's driving this analysis and this work plan is that we are going to make a much very, as a, you know, region, a large commitment in fixed rail. And so we've got sound transit doing alignment planning as well as station area planning that will, one, create new neighborhoods that are accessible to transit. It will make new investments in affordable housing and also do a lot to sort of connect our our workforce to some of the region's major employers. And so to me, the the introduction of light rail and the sound transit investments, right, is one, a transformative piece that's happening, but it's also one that's going to help catalyze a lot of the things that this plan cares about. Whether you do anything about it at all, right? In the no action, right, it's going to be a disruptive process. And a lot about the planning process here is trying to get out in advance of that to sort of deal with the some of the opportunities we see, as well as sort of try to mitigate some of the potential challenges. And also, I would say, just broadly speaking, really accentuates sort of the communities and the neighborhoods strengths here. And and how can you sort of build on that? We have very sort of key focal points around sort of, you know, diverse business ownership. We have many focal points around growing housing ownership opportunities. Those are all places that could be directly connected. Those are all places that could be directly connected to that transit investment. Um, so let's go to the next slide. And so, um, you know, I won't uh belabor these things too much here, but like if we said like, well, you know, if, what could, what would we, what's the thing we want to fix, right? If we could kind of solve for these problems, we would get more of the things that we do care about, right? And one of the challenges right here is because we have a high prevalence of, of rent, renting, not because there's something wrong with rental households, but because currently with our housing crisis, right? We have so many attendant problems that renters experience, right? High cost burdening puts pressure on other parts of a family's budget. And so what can we do from a sort of planning perspective that would sort of deal with that level of instability? And this is why we have a focal point on sort of homeownership. Also, right, you actually have a very strong sort of small business base, right, that is particularly oriented in your corridors. Um, and they don't typically um work within sort of the coordination and support scheme that many uh business districts work in. So this is a key thing to be able for, I would say, the city to let, how can you sort of make it easier for, for businesses to um to work at scale and coordination with each other? Uh, one of the other big pieces, right, because you have this sort of um live-work mismatch as well as a sort of jobs-skill mismatch, we have a, you know, what people call, John, about underemployment or longer commuting problem. So what can we do to sort of shorten those challenges? We'll do a lot to sort of help uh move things forward. And then obviously, um, any questions around safety for both residents and businesses, right? Scale across both of those dimensions. And so making sure that we um uh pay attention to that. And next, the, the last piece here. And so when we kind of boil all this up in our planning process, uh, we really felt like there's kind of two big uh pieces. And, and, and had, and great Dan came up with the sort of great sort of marketing aspect of this, of trying to root these actions in ownership, as well as sort of growing them an opportunity. And so we have the SEEDS acronym for, for the South Everett Economic Development Strategy. And I think uh the things that we placed within that work plan for the city are really sort of rooted and reflected in sort of the structural realities that the economy is seeing here, as well as what we've been hearing from the community, um both residents and businesses. And so I'm going to turn it back to Dan here to talk a little bit about some of these action strategies.
Yeah, thanks Tina and Morgan. That was fantastic. So how do these work out? I just, we've just put together a few examples of ways that these could, these two ideas of rooted ownership and, and supportive opportunities can work themselves out into initiatives. Strengthening local business ecosystems, I'm going to blast through these, you've probably read them already, but interest of time. Emphasizing for sale housing, even though we know that a lot of rental housing is coming, we believe that the emphasis that we should place is more on for sale housing and for helping people in South Everett get into for sale housing to ex, to enjoy the, the uh opportunities of wealth creation. Stabilize small business space, one of the places we've talked about a lot is Casino Square. And the fact that this is a, i- i- it might be like walking on ice right now with the investment of Sound Transit on the way. And so how can we stabilize that for some very beloved small business owners? And then grow this win-win employment opportunity where not only, we've talked mostly in this presentation about the South Everett residents wanting to be better employed and closer employed, but also we have an amazing network of businesses, including Fluke, by the way, this locate, has a very large facility right on Evergreen Way, that need good employees, that will be loyal, that live close, that don't have the demands of commute or the costs of commute. And so will, will grow with the company for years to come. And so we have this really great uh win-win situation that we can go. So next steps, I wanted to put together a four-year work plan for South Everett with both efforts to encourage local ownership and connect Southwest Everett jobs with, with residents. White papers to support grant applications. Lisk is uh been a great partner in applying for grants. And we believe that South Everett, given the, the mix of characteristics of this uh neighborhood, can can really be successful at winning grants um in the future. So having uh white papers that can support grant applications would be something that would be really useful. And it's something the city can, can put together and then connect and convene with implementation partners. Uh, we've already found some, uh Tina mentioned, getting the workforce people together. Just doing that as part of this study was super positive. And uh, I, I think one of the things that we heard was more and more please. Um, we need that. And that is something, without the city becoming a workforce pro- provider or trainer, that's something pretty easily that we can do. Can, can, connect and convene the ones that are already there and making sure that they are all playing roles in a team sport. So with that, leave it there. There's so much more we can talk about, so many different avenues we went down, but uh looking forward to your conversation.
Questions or comments? Councilor Bobbly.
Thank you very much for putting such effort and emphasis on this area, because it's been long needed. I don't have a bunch of comments and questions um right now, but I'm just overwhelmed that, in a good way, overwhelmed in a good way, that uh this is very, being very seriously discussed and considered. So thank you. And maybe I'll raise my hand when other people eke my brain.
Councilor Ryan.
Great. Thank you so much for this. Um, a slide that was breezed through, but I think is really important, is the community-owned property uh element of this for one of the action items of, while you're going through the presentation, I was thinking about how one of the strengths of the Casino Road neighborhood is the network of people and how tight-knit they are and how they care for each other and look out for each other. So having uh such a tight-knit community, be able to activate that tight-knit community-ness uh to do community-owned property, I think is going to be um really transformative for the area, uh because they're, you know, stronger together and can um pool resources for sk- uh economies of scale uh to help with making sure that they can protect and preserve the spaces that make the area so special. So I'm really, really thrilled to see this and look forward to hearing more about it.
And I, I will just say that this, this is uh the list of like uh case studies to do in this is fairly short compared to community-owned or publicly-owned housing. Housing, there's lots of examples of affordable housing providers and so forth. Uh, but uh doing the same thing in a commercial space is, is, is really unique. But there are some, and, and we're really trying to learn from those.
Councilor Bader.
Thanks, Councilor President. A few questions here, um, very intriguing. Um, in terms of training and stuff, do, do we need to look at maybe partnering with the county at uh Community College or Bo-Tech Satellite in that argument? You're just far enough away from Ed Everett Community College, Evans Community College, to be like inconvenient to, you know, half hour away, probably reasonably to get. Are, are we looking at something like that or?
Yeah, uh definitely. Uh, anything to make it more accessible is fantastic. There are uh Water Center, as well as uh Everett Community College, both operate training for aerospace, specifically in, in advanced manufacturing that are close by. There's Snow Isle Bo-Tech that is, is right there in South Everett as well. But you're absolutely right, there, there could be more. And uh, like Morgan pointed out, forty-six thousand people right there. It's, it's definitely a critical mass for, for that kind of work. So that can be something that we can encourage. Thank you.
Gotcha. I've, and uh been on business ecosystems, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're interested in, in like business improvement areas. But I must say, I'm also disappointed that we haven't seen uh business association groups come together on North Broadway or Evergreen between Forty-first and, and uh, and, and SR five-two-six. So wondering, does that need to be more citywide look at those issues than uh, than just that area there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing all the answering right now, but it's just because I'm so excited about the topic, but, but uh I would say that we've really been blessed by the Greater Everett Chamber of Commerce being formed recently. And I know that uh that group has a real desire to have more uh uh a global presence, but also neighborhood presence where there are more uh chamber-like activities. The, it's interesting, the business improvement areas are difficult when you don't have a local ownership of property. Uh, as you know, from the Downtown Everett Association, when you have property owners who come together and agree to tax themselves, basically, um, then you can form the BIA. What we have in South Everett is a lot of either uh non-local owners of property or chain um chain uh owners of property and who aren't interested in BIAs generally. And so we have great small businesses, but they, because they don't own the land that they're doing their business on, it's the BIA avenue is, is harder. And I'm not saying it's impossible, it's just more difficult. Uh, we could probably get a good BIA with car dealers. You know, so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, then uh, you, you mentioned that uh, so that, so a couple of things I wish you'd benchmarked for us, um, at least relative to the rest of Everett, uh were under housing and business conditions, high rental burden and limited affordable ownership opportunities. It feels like that's almost citywide. Um, so I, I'd be curious to see really how does this area differ from uh that, or, or few locally-owned commercial properties and businesses outside of downtown Everett. It really feels like, again, that issue citywide. The um, uh, the uh employment inflow and outflow patterns, uh same thing, uh especially once you get south of Forty-first. Um, so I'd be kind of curious to see if we could get benchmarks maybe by zip code or something like that, because to the extent we're looking at this area specifically, really how different is it than the rest of, of Everett?
I, I will say that we did provide some citywide uh documentation in the comprehensive plan that was, we asked Eco Northwest to do it, just so the, the benchmarks were roughly the same. Um, but we didn't do it by zip code, which I, I totally agree, it would be fantastic to have that information. Um, but uh there is citywide, I will say that um the one stat that really stood out to me was that the, the relative uh rental cost in South Everett was uh basically ninety-five percent of the Snohomish County um average. But the homeownership ca- uh price was only two-thirds of the Snohomish County average. So it's a relative bargain to purchase housing there, but it was not a bargain to rent there, which shows the demand, but also the, the difficulty with the cost burdening of housing when you have lower income, but the rents are as high as they are anywhere else in the county. So um, that's.
I just wanted to add one piece to that, because I think it's an important piece of context. And that is like the importance of a focus on skill building, wage progression, and, you know, increasing incomes for people. Because as we look at the cost burdening and as we look at the potential for displacement, the way that we're going to help people be resilient as the neighborhood changes is by helping their earning potential. So I think we, we can't understate how important that is. We know that, like, we have a housing crisis, and we also know it takes a very long time to build new units. And so it's a both and, but I think that this focus on skill building, on helping people to be able to have jobs that don't take them forty-five minutes to an hour and a half to, to commute, I think it's going to be a really important piece. And again, that, that may not be the direct role of the city, but it's the city's role of helping to pull together those partners and make sure we have a coordinated plan. And then partnering with community-based organizations who are trusted by folks who live in that neighborhood, um, so that they can connect with those opportunities. Because there are, there's no shortage of like training programs, but like, do people have sufficient English to be able to participate in those? Do they feel comfortable? Do they feel like they understand how to navigate that? So that is going to be an important part of the implementation.
Great. And then just a one, one final comment or, and one final question. I mean, if, having grown up in there, or spent the first thirty years of my life or more down there in South, in, living in South Everett, and then obviously getting down there frequently, it feels very much like, once you get two to four blocks off of Ever Mallway, Evergreen Way and West Casino, that it'd be hard to identify, I mean, to the untrained eye, how, you know, that you're, you know, that you're in a different place in Everett, at least south of Forty-first, right? Um, so to me, a lot of that looks s- similar. And then the final, and then finally question, what is for sale housing? I apologize, I'm not aware of what that term means. Thanks.
For sale housing, it just means, you know, you're, you're owning as opposed to renting. Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, we like to keep it fresh by changing the jargon, I think.
Yeah, and, and I, I would say that uh it could include condominiums, townhomes, um uh any number of form of like uh zero lot line housing, as well as the traditional detached single-family that we're familiar with.
Councilor Asadinco.
Well, with respect to the for sale housing, it was one of the questions I was going to ask it. I think uh, I mean, a number of us have been hammering on the various builder groups wanting to more condominium-style things, but that's still a tough nut to crack. I think there are more measures that still need to go that way. And it's interesting, because um most of the questions I had have already been answered. But one of the, one of the ones was that we have been building, we're, we're a city of more renters than owners, and we've been building fractionally more rental units. So I guess if I understand this correctly, even though a lot of that building's been going on, most of it has been happening closer here to downtown. Because I've been hearing that we're catching up better with respect to rental housing than we are uh owned housing.
Yeah, uh maybe I, I can paraphrase just to make sure that I'm answering the right question. Uh, so you're saying that uh the not South Everett part of Everett is maybe catching up on the rental side?
That's my impression. I've heard some numbers and certainly in terms of what's in the pipeline, we seem to be doing better that way numerically.
Yeah, I would say that um what stood out to me as, as uh Eco Northwest especially was gathering the data was realizing that I had been looking at a blended average of housing for Everett, um, which was, showed a higher rental um percentage uh than Snohomish County generally. And I think the light went off that, oh, that's, it's a blended average. It's the South Everett that is really much higher than the rest of Everett. Ever, the rest of Everett that's not South Everett is pretty similar to the rest of Snohomish County. So more like closer to, you know, forty, forty percent rental with sixty percent homeownership. And South Everett is more than flipped to that. So I don't know if I'm answering quite that question, but then unfortunately, in my mind, condo litigation makes buildings stacked, large condominium projects uh unlikely because of the litigation that is involved for the builder. And so we just haven't been building that at all as a region. And so uh as a region, we are all becoming more and more dependent on the rental uh market for housing. Uh, but I, actually, the development in South Everett, new development recently has been pretty limited. Uh, the Four Corners project is not in South Everett, it's just, just uh north. And so there's been very few, there have been some townhome projects though. So uh there, the one bright spot, there is a fairly ninety-unit project that went up kind of behind target. Um, there have been some other infill developments. So uh, you know, maybe the market is helping correct this, but I just think that we need to do whatever we can to make sure that that continues to uh help absorb, almost like we're trying to balance a, a children's mobile, right? That's out of balance, and we're just trying to, you know, sixty, sixty-three percent renters is just an imbalance in our system that makes it hard for that, that neighborhood to really function well economically.
Yeah, the, the only owned stuff I've seen recently, and the majority of it is townhouses, and many of those have been selling for some fairly high prices compared to single-family even. Uh, and I was glad to hear you mention the Everett Chamber of Commerce, that was one of the questions I was going to ask. Um, and I guess I want to understand that, and I think this is something that our planning director, your ex-Stevens, Washta, had mentioned months and months ago, that there are some significant established protections for um housing, for affordable housing, but there aren't really established legal protections or structures for business properties. And, and so, and that then, if protections like that, if, if business property is meant to be sustained affordable, or the affordability of it is meant to be sustained, it sounds like that kind of thing is typically done by uh agreement among a collection of owners um to sort of, um, how can I say this? Uh, organized together to co-own and ensure the affordability. I'm not sure too much about the structures of that, but my sense of it is if anytime in the near term, we're going to establish and maintain that affordability. It's going to have to be done by essentially private agreements.
I think that is one of the things that we've been talking about in terms of commercial, uh, community ownership of commercial property. And so if you think about, there's a number of, you know, strip malls along Evergreen Way, including Casino Square that, that house a number of immigrant businesses and they're owned by, you know, folks who live far away. There's an opportunity there to look at whether or not the purchase of, uh, that property could be done by, um, a nonprofit organization whose mission it is to do economic and community development work. And then that organization could, you know, lease out that space and manage that property and maintain it um, as affordable rents to make sure that we don't displace those businesses that help to give the character of the neighborhood. Um, so typically, you know, Lisk has been doing this work across the country and there are a number of cities where there are commercial land trusts, that's one model. There's community investment trusts, which we've also been, um, learning about and working with. So I think there are a number of levers. None of that is done, um, without, uh, investment from city, county philanthropy, um, because it's difficult to be able to maintain that. So I think that, that those are, those are things we want to continue to explore and we need to think about the financing.
I'll, I'll just throw in an example that you might not think of, but of course is a great one for us is Pipeless Market. Is, is, is a the Public Development Authority, um, that, uh, is operated for the public good, but it's a commercial property. So there, like I said, you can, you, you can point a finger at a lot of different housing developments. The, the commercial ones are fewer and farther between, but there are ones.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Vogel.
Quickly, yeah, I remembered something. So page nineteen, no, it's not on. There now it is. Page nineteen, uh, sponsor apprenticeships in high demand sectors. There's a Boulder, Colorado model. Um, I'm curious more about that and maybe we can talk offline, but, um, my question is, have we, apprenticeships, we just passed a new but updated apprenticeship model for city stuff. Um, I know that we've had other discussions about labor and whatnot, and I'm curious if, um, and I know there's the apprenticeship school in Marysville and I'm probably getting all the cities wrong, but have, has this group and this whole scenario been in discussion with the local labor unions and stuff as well to help instigate these? You know, IBW, getting people, the machinists, all of that goodness. People working towards better paying jobs.
I, I think that, uh, the answer to that is yes. Um, working both with like the unions, employers and the training programs is the key to being able to put together good, um, you know, workforce development strategies. We have a lot of really great people that are doing great work in that space. And I, and I think again, that there's an opportunity to convene folks and to talk about how to create stronger connections um, among people who live in the neighborhood, these programs, and then to recognize where are their gaps? What are the things that are, that are challenging folks to not be able to persist? Um, but having labor at the table is a critical part of being able to move that forward.
Okay, Councilor Tui.
Uh, yeah, well, I want to thank, uh, thank you all for this presentation. I think the summary is very well, very easy to understand where we are and where we need to go. So thank you for that. And I'm just curious, do we have a projected timeline on the four-year plan? When that will be done? On the very last page, step, next steps for your work plan.
Right, yeah, that will be, uh, something to work on for the rest of the year and be launched January, along with my economic development, um, strategic plan update, which goes through twenty twenty-five currently.
Great. Look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilor Vogel, did you have one more?
No.
Okay, I, well, you, okay, just making sure. Just for sake for time, I mean, we can talk offline, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things that haven't been covered. Uh, I noticed here on one of your slides about aging retail corridor. It's turning into a visual identity of Evergreen Way and Everett Mallway. So I'd really like that, but I think we need to address it and how we convert that into something else. Some sort of town center, we call nodes or nods. Think that area is lacking some centralized space. We just call it the Everett Mall or we call it Fred Meyer. We don't really have like, or Casino Row. We don't really have some identified center village type. I just think there's just a lot of potential there. And this is for offline. And so the third kind of thought I had was, um, the city of Shoreline has transformed Highway ninety-nine. So why, is that something that we should be considering? Um, I'm sure they got grant money. I'm sure they didn't pay for it all, but I, those are the, um, kind of the three things that the aging retail corridor, the lack of town centers and, um, some sort of re- revision of Highway ninety-nine. So we can just dress them now or we can just talk offline or?
Well, eh, I, I smiled just because I was eight years in Shoreline before coming to the city of Everett and, uh, worked very closely on the redo of reboot of that. Um, and so, yeah, that's something I think that if I started talking about now, we'd get out of here by Friday. Um, so let's go offline, but yeah, I think that's, there's definitely something there. One of the things that we instituted in the, well, let me back up. We have about twenty-seven miles of highway frontage in Everett. Uh, given Everett, Everett Way, Everett Mallway, Nineteenth Broadway and the part of Rucker that feels like a hu- highway. That's way too much for just retail and restaurants. It needs to have housing. It needs to have jobs. It needs to have amenities and it already does, but there's a lack of nodes. There's a lack of, uh, vibrancy there, um, especially in the South Everett part. And it has something that definitely is high on our list.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you very much for your time and then you, we look forward to your report. Appreciate it. Okay, on to, um, item number seven, we have, uh, one more briefing. A permit process informational. And Lori, you have some introductions.
I do, as they are approaching Sabrina Good, our Permit Services Manager and Tony Lee, our Building Official, are here to provide an informational briefing on our permitting process.
Thank you, Lori.
Bet.
I should have watched the, uh, the last track on them, shouldn't I have?
Sorry, everyone. One moment, it signed me out of the Zoom link, so patience please.
Great, thank you. Uh, once again, uh, Sabrina and I lead the, uh, Permit Services Division of the Public Works Department. Today, we'll primarily be discussing our role and impact in Everett. Share some of our permitting metrics and overview the permitting processes, which is a multidisciplinary process involving team members from Planning, Public Works and Fire Departments. Permit Services plays a crucial role in transforming Everett through development. We are responsible for permitting and inspecting private development. We help make Everett's vision come alive by enforcing city council adopted codes. And we promote life and health safety in the built environment by enforcing city and state adopted construction codes during the permitting, inspection and code enforcement process. Permit Services has four main roles. We review permits for minimum compliance with adopted codes to promote life and health safety, infrastructure support, environmental impacts and municipal code standards. We issue approved construction permits. We inspect private development and construction for compliance with the approved plans and adopted codes. And we enforce compliance with codes for unlawful, dangerous and nuisance properties. In twenty twenty-four alone, Permit Services performed over twenty thousand plan reviews. We issued over seven thousand six, six hundred permits, including four hundred and twenty new housing units. We performed over twenty-one thousand construction inspections and code enforcement opened and closed almost two thousand three hundred code cases.
In Permit Services, we have published a five-step process to guide applicants to success. We streamlined this process in twenty twenty-four and also completed our long-term digital transformation project. This allows applicants to apply, pay for and receive permits through our online permitting portal and staff to conduct plan review digitally. Step one of the permitting process is getting started. This is where pre-submital research is conducted and the applicant hires their project team. Step two is prepare and apply. In this step, construction documents are prepared utilizing our submittal checklists and the published instructions to apply for permits online. We also accept paper permit applications to accommodate those without computer access. Step three is permit review. For permits that require plan review, the city reviews plans for compliance. Designers then update their plans per the correction letter and the city re-reviews for approval. This is an iterative process until compliance with all applicable codes is shown on the construction plans. Step four is permit approval, fees and issuance. Permits are prepared and the applicant is notified of permit approval. The applicant then pays for permit fees and then permits are issued. Now the applicant can download their permit and their approved plans for construction. And then finally, step five is construction and inspections. Construction begins, the city inspects throughout all stages of construction. Each permit is finalized and certificate of occupancy is granted.
Permit Services processes over twenty different permit types. Several permit types have multiple subtypes to further categorize our permits. For example, you can have a building permit that is for a deck, which is a smaller scope, or a building permit for a new house, which is a larger scope. On the right side of the slide, you can see we have different permit types for buildings, site work, trades. And we also process permits for other city departments. We permit all types of projects for adopted code requirements, including fences, new houses and accessory dwelling units, subdivisions, multifamily construction, hospitals, schools, jails and industrial centers such as Boeing and the port.
Seventy percent of our permits do not require any plan review and they are processed within one to three business days. This is over five thousand permits per year. These are permits such as plumbing, residential mechanical, electrical, residential re-roofs, solar permits and utility services. The other thirty percent, which is over two thousand permits, do require plan review. And they're placed in our review queue based on their plan review complexity and project size. We call those tiers. Tier one reviews are small-scale projects with low plan review complexity. They're typically projects like fences, decks, retaining walls, fire sprinklers, signs and demolition permits. This category has a two-week goal for plan review turnaround times. Tier two reviews are mid-level plan review complexity projects and are typically projects such as residential remodels and tenant improvements, detached garages and ADUs. Tier two reviews have a four-week goal for plan review turnaround times. And tier three reviews are the highest complexity projects with the greatest number of codes to review. New construction for both residential and commercial projects fall into this category. Tier three reviews have a six-week goal for plan review turnaround times. Permits are reviewed by planning, public works, building reviewers and fire. Each of these review disciplines typically has one hundred and fifty to two hundred reviews in their queue at any given time. Thorough review takes time to ensure that minimum compliance with codes are being met and that life and health safety is not compromised.
This chart shows a plan review turnaround times for first review of new construction projects, which are typically categorized as our tier three reviews over our last twenty-five years. Permit timelines are given in a range such as four to six weeks for the average turnaround timelines experienced in each calendar year with the year's turnaround goal, time goal shown in orange. In twenty fifteen, permitting volumes started to increase with the beginning of the economic recovery, following the two thousand and eight recession. Over time, permit timelines increased with permit volume and code complexity as regulatory compliance has increased. In twenty twenty, we had our longest turnaround times due to high permitting volumes and decreased staffing during COVID. Permit Services staffing was static from two thousand and two thousand and twenty-three, despite increases in permit application volume and vastly increased complexity. With administration support, Permit Services was able to restore and increase staffing levels over the last few years, which has resulted in a decrease in plan review timelines. By twenty twenty-four, we were back to meeting our overall timeline goals.
This is a case study of someone who wants to build a new house in Everett on an existing lot, following the five steps of the permitting process that we previously went through. So again, step one is to hire the project team. This project may require the following professionals to be hired. An architect or a home designer, a structural engineer depending on the design, a civil engineer depending on the scope and triggered requirements of the site development work, a geotechnical engineer depending on the site soils and proximity to steep slopes, a wetland biologist depending on the site's proximity to critical areas, a general contractor and subcontractors, including electrical, mechanical, plumbing and fire sprinkler contractors. Step two is to apply for permits. This project may require the following construction permit types to be applied for after any required land use approvals. A demolition permit to remove any existing structures that are currently on the property. A residential building permit for the new structure. A public works permit for all site work, including grading, paving, utilities, site features, it's like a retaining wall. Um, the stormwater mitigation regulatory requirements, electrical, mechanical and plumbing permits, water and sewer utility permits for any utility services to the structure. And depending on the house, a fire suppression permit and/or a photovoltaic or solar permit may also be either needed or desired. Step three is the plan review fro- process. For this project, only two of those required permits need to go through plan review. They are the residential building permit and the public works permit for site development. Because this is new construction, these permits would be categorized as a tier three review. It'll have a goal first review turnaround time of six weeks and a goal of three weeks for any subsequent re-reviews. This process will be repeated until the plans demonstrate minimum compliance with all applicable codes. The specific timeline will heavily depend on the applicant's turnaround time as well between correction letters. Oftentimes, we see two to five months between submissions, significantly increasing the overall timeline of a permit. Step four is permit issuance. In this step, the city prepares the permit approval package, which includes both the permits that went through plan review, as well as all of the additional permits that they applied for that do not require a plan review. The applicant will purchase the approved permits and the permits get issued. And then step five is construction and inspections. In this step, um, it begins with demolishing any existing structures on the property, then preparing the site with any grading, paving, utilities. then preparing the site with any grading, paving, utility, infrastructure, and stormwater management practices, constructing the building foundations, framing, and any interior work, installing the electrical, plumbing, and mechanical systems throughout the building, obtaining the required inspections throughout construction where the city will inspect the work to the minimum code standards, completing all permits and obtaining permit finals, and lastly, receiving the certificate of occupation or certificate of occupancy to move in.
The complexity of construction codes has vastly increased during my professional career. The top picture shows the codes that were needed to design and review a building in nineteen ninety-four. The bottom picture shows the increased volume, scope, and the size of the codes necessary today. Regulatory requirements are continuously evolving and expanding with each code being revised and updated every three years to keep up with ever-changing construction methods, new materials, and lessons learned. This is an industry of professional designers, licensed engineers, registered architects, and licensed contractors. Each trade is required to know and follow complex codes to keep increasing, that that keep increasing for the protection of life and health safety. Although some small-scale projects can be done by homeowners and commercial tenants, the vast majority of construction has advanced in complexity beyond what most individuals can successfully complete without assistance from professionals.
We collected a sample of plan review timelines from several, several of the regional jurisdictions. This is current data reported by each jurisdiction jurisdiction for July of two thousand and twenty-five, um, which is the height of the construction season. This chart shows the permit turnaround timelines for first review of new construction projects, uh, which is typically the longest turnaround category, just like our previous, um, chart. So in this chart, the low-end turnaround times and number of weeks are shown in the light teal color. The high-end turnaround times and number of weeks are shown in blue, and the average turnaround times and number of weeks are shown in the gold. Um, Everett is the second jurisdiction on the chart. As you can see, Everett's timelines are comparable to the regional jurisdictions at an average turnaround time of eight weeks for first re- review. Our current range is six to ten.
We're here to help people have successful progress. We have published many tools to help streamline permitting and inspections. Here are some of our suggestions for navigating this complex process. Utilize the city's free resources, including our published five-step permitting process to step, to set project expectations and timelines. Review the informational handouts on our webpage, and schedule a counter or virtual appointment for a free concierge service with plan review staff before applying for a permit. Hire a professional team to design and construct the project to code. These professionals are hired to conduct pre-submital research, prepare and submit quality plans, ensure designs and plans meet code requirements prior submitting, and that your contractor is licensed, knowledgeable, and experienced in the scope of working performed. Putting the time and effort in upfront will often save time and money for, during the project. Additionally, follow the outlined instructions. Submit the required documents per the published submitted checklists. Prepare the construction documents in accordance with the document standards for digital review and approval. Follow the upload instructions to ensure a submittal or resubmittal is correctly made. Do a back check prior to resubmittal to ensure that every correction item has been adequately addressed for code compliance. And then contact Permit Services staff before or during the permit pro- permitting process. If you need assistance, we are the process experts who are involved in your project and can help your project get to the finish line. At Permit Services, we are dedicated to supporting Everett's development and promoting the safety and well-being of our community through diligent enforcement of codes and standards. We strive to provide exceptional customer service and have received numerous praises for the partnership we have built with developers in the communities. Thank you for your attention today, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Councilmember Ring.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the great presentation. I hear a lot about permitting and the process, so this will help inform conversations with the public. I have two questions, uh, one with the AI becoming more prevalent. Um, are there opportunities for incorporating AI into some of the review process? Or you and the application process, or if you could share more about AI conversations, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, sure, I can. So I'm part of, um, our city's AI champions group, and we've recently had conversations about, um, getting an AI agent back up, which was kind of like our chatbot that we had several years ago, um, and seeing how we can load in a bunch of, um, common questions and stuff like that to help guide applicants who are getting started on our website, um, to figure out, where do I get started? How do I get through this process? And so we're trying to, um, uh, make that something that's coming up in the next, uh, year potentially. Um, with plan review, um, for building permits at least, we use Upcodes. Upcodes is a program that has, or it's a website actually, that has a bunch of, um, codes. And if you pay for the licensed version, then they actually have AI incorporated in. So you can type in stuff like, I'm working on a tenant improvement, what codes are relevant to my project. This is something that, um, design professionals, so an architecture firm, um, structural engineers, that sort of, um, professional would be utilizing AI to help guide them through what codes they need to meet and how to actually design their project to those codes. Anything else to add on that?
So far, that's pretty good.
Okay. Do you have any further questions on that?
Um, no, I think, yeah, I think especially that pre-review process, um, I would think that an AI, uh, apparatus could review for even just like missing data fields or documents or something. So then you don't get to, you know, step three and then have to go back to the beginning to request those documents. But it sounds like you guys are already on it, so that's great.
We're, we're trying to stay on the forefront.
And then my other question is, um, if there's, you know, a contractor or master builders who have identified, uh, process improvement opportunities, how can they share that feedback? Or if they do share that feedback, how can that be implemented? Or what does that feedback loop look like?
Of course. So we're always looking out for and, um, applying to responding to our community. And I have met numerous times over my career with master builders or with local developers, with architects, and we get, um, very good criticisms, criticisms and comments throughout our careers. And we take from that what we think we can really expand on, and we actually incorporate those ideas on webpages or, um, maybe the way we handle things. So we're very receptive, uh, receptive to, uh, to our community. I like to say it's a team sport. This is bigger than any one person, so as a team, we try to let people know that we're here to help, and we are part of their code, uh, experts, and we're here to help at any stage of the process.
Yeah, we like to partner with our developers and community members. And I've actually had several meetings with, um, people who say, hey, I've got some suggestions. Can I just reach out to you? So if you guys get any of those questions, feel free to pop them down to me directly, um, or Tony as well. Um, and I'm happy to reach out and set up a meeting with them. Um, this is actually a great example, uh, I mentioned on a previous slide that we just redid our whole process with that five-step process. Our permitting webpage was laid out much differently, um, previously. And when we completed our digital transformation and brought our last building permits online, we revamped our whole website to match the digital process and can gu- kind of guide everyone through it. And so that five steps that you saw is an exact replica of what you will see if you go to our Permit Services webpage. And we've designed it in such a way that an applicant can look at where they're at in the process, click right into that, and then look at, look for their next steps and their questions.
I just want to jump in and, 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 and make sure everyone heard that. So when there's a permitting question, please direct people to staff. It's, it's, it's to Sabrina. So it's, uh, we can try to understand it. These are the experts. And so, um, when somebody reaches out to all of us as electeds and say, hey, how come this isn't happening? You know what? Let me direct you to the team that actually can answer your questions. Um, is the best way for the community member to get those answers quickly, rather than us trying to muck around in it.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin.
Councilmember Vogel.
We got this printed out, and I'm going to take it home and keep it because I know that I've been afraid to go and get a permit for something. I don't know what yet, but I've been afraid, and it sounds like I can let go of my fear because it sounds like the issues, while I'm sure it's not perfect because nothing ever is, there's been a lot that has been resolved. And so that's very exciting for me to hear. Thank you for all of the work and, uh, even the graphs. I mean, I've heard a lot of blah, and so I'm sure you've heard even more.
Absolutely.
If you're in it. Um, and so I look forward to, I guess, not hearing anything. But, um, uh, but I'm going to absolutely utilize this. And thank you also, Mayor, because I did get something in my inbox. I'm like, I don't know what the problem is, but now I know where to send this person. So, um, that's really all. Thanks.
Thank you. I know that we could work in a, in a, an environment with zero complaints, but we're going to strive to, uh, address those complaints when they come in and see what we can resolve.
I also want to add that we have between five and eight thousand customers at any given time. So the scale of complaints that you receive is less than one percent of the customers that we have. And there's also a lot of very happy customers who send praises. And while this is frequently a thankless job, we actually do receive quite a bit of thank yous as well.
Very good points. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tharling.
I guess I'll chime in on one of those. Certainly, three and a half years ago, I was hearing more concerns, and that was pre-digitalized, uh, digital implementation of this. So I'm hearing more positive things recently. I definitely resonate with the idea of suggesting people invest the time and energy upfront. Um, I got my own permit to build a house, uh, did that all myself more than thirty years ago. So I know how much more complicated, uh, it is now. I guess the one thing that, um, that I would ask or suggest, uh, as when I get into a new field, one of the things I try to do, whether it's online or in videos or whatever, is learn what people typically do wrong, what causes them grief, what kind of hazards I might not see. And so, um, one thing I can imagine that might be helpful that I think you know internally, but may not be in a particular document, is, is a list of the kinds of things that typically go wrong. The things that cause you the worst headaches, the longest delays, the recycling of things, um, was, uh, and I know Tony had helped out in, uh, in an issue we had with a constituent sometime in the past. And I don't think they saw that stuff going in as well as they could have. So I guess I will generally suggest that that might be one of the most helpful things. The other thing it might do is, um, make people aware of the world that you work in. Because applicants, they know about their world. They don't know about yours. They don't, in some cases, have any idea how much grief they can cause you and themselves. And so I guess I'll offer that suggestion and congratulate you for the improvements.
Thank you. Actually, this slide right here, um, is the positive spin of how developers can be successful. But if you flip it, it actually is all of the problems and, um, like top ten hardships that we come across. So that would be things like people not following submission, uh, instructions, and then they will submit, and then not follow the rest of the path to submit a transmittal sheet and get that resubmittal going again. And so it's just off in the permitting portal. Um, and then we don't know that that has been submitted because they failed to some, follow the instructions, which are published in about six places that you have to click through. Um, other things are, um, not doing the quality control when they're resubmitting. So one of the biggest challenges that we face is when we're backchecking a plan after it's been resubmitted, we will go through a correction letter, and let's just say there's ten items. Three of the items will be addressed, and we'll have to issue a second correction letter with the remaining seven questions. And they're not things that they haven't seen before. So each of those cycles adds to the permitting timeline. And then you all might get a complaint, this is taking forever. I don't know why it's so hard to get through the process. And we're sitting here going, we've outlined this stuff. These are the codes that we have to follow in order to approve these plans. We offer meetings with our applicants and design teams to help them understand the corrections that we have issued in order to hopefully get on the same page if we think that they're just missing what we're saying. And so again, all of these items here are both, uh, frequently mis-followed instructions, um, but also tips that if they know this information upfront, it will help them be successful and to be mindful of.
So is there anything kind of at the beginning of this process, sort of a handout or whatever, that's kind of collects all these problems that they may face? Where you're saying, well, look, don't, don't foul us both up by doing these things or by failing to do these things?
So a lot of projects go through pre-application meetings, which is a process through the planning department. Um, and then other, uh, projects, um, may skip that process or in addition have counter or virtual counter appointments that we mentioned. Um, and in all of those meetings, we mention these types of tips and telling people, this is how you'll be successful. Make sure you're looking through all the codes. Uh, make sure you're doing a quality control check and backchecking everything before you guys submit. Uh, make sure that when you get corrections, you're looking through every single item and responding in the response column, um, that's provided. And so we give everybody those tips in pretty much every single meeting that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, I'll, I'll provide a scenario for you that's probably not that popular. So you enter, you submit a tier three, um, style permit. Um, you come back with a list of corrections. The new corrections are submitted, and then you find, after the review, you find some more. Um, is that person kind of moved up on the priority list?
So re-reviews typically get about a halftime review. Um, so what we actually have in our system is, um, uh, like an automatic triage essentially. And so we have our permit technicians, when they get a transmittal that, that something's been resubmitted, we have re-review lines, and they have default due dates put in because it's a re-review instead of a first review. So all these tiers have, um, specific due dates associated with them. And then in that overall review queue, um, if you have three-week, uh, due date, it's going to fit that due date in our, let's see, let me back up. Our queue is based on due dates. And so if your queue looks like this, and you might have new construction, and it's a six-week due date, so that day's going to be six weeks from today, that three-week re-review comes in, it's going to put it on the queue list where it belongs so that we can equitably review in the right order, and then we review in due date order. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you ever come up with such, such situations where you find new stuff?
So, sure.
Yeah, that's where.
Oftentimes, it's because somebody has not fully developed the drawings yet, and we see a few general things, and we'll make comments like, you need to show us the structural system better. You need to show us this better. And then when they come back in, now we have a better set of plans that we can even respond to. It's not typically where we go, oh, I missed that. It, it can happen, but typically it's because I couldn't even tell that that was going to be a problem because the plans weren't developed to this extent, to an extent that we could even see that problem coming up.
That, that makes sense. I get that. Um, just for time's sake, uh, could you talk about, um, like pre-approved plans or some sort of accelerated process that you might have for someone submitting plans?
Yeah, so currently we have a residential basic process, and that's basically your cookie cutter, um, residential house. We also have, um, expanded this program into townhouses. Um, for example, if you have a subdivision, you're going to go to the model house. There might be five model homes, and they're going to build them on a couple of different lots, and they may have a couple of different, um, uh, options, optional styles. So what a developer does with a residential basic is they say, here's model A. Here's all the options I want to allow for model A. And then they go through the permitting process, the whole iterative thing with correction letters and getting their plans approved. That permit is approved for the code cycle, which is typically a three-year code cycle. So if they apply right at the beginning of a code cycle, it'll be good for three years. If they apply towards the end of a code cycle, they're going to have to re-update it as soon as a new code cycle goes into effect. Um, then what they will do is, um, take their subdivision, and they'll say, I'm now applying for a building permit on lot one. Lot one is going to have residential basic A with this option and this option. And then we're able to do a quick process for And then we're able to do a quick process for that building permit. We do have to have some planning checks and site work checks as well. But the building permit process, we won't have to do that same correction and same review. Say if it's an 85 lot division, you won't have to do that same thing 85 times. You just streamlined it to only doing five reviews essentially. So that's a program we have today. Is that kind of what you were talking about?
Yeah. And I'm, and that was one of the parts. And the other part was, you know, we have ADUs. Is there some sort of accelerated program for that? That, there's been a lot of talk about.
So it's been talked that perhaps there could be a body of pre-approved plans.
Yeah.
We don't have anything like that today and we would probably have to partner with designers. I know other cities have done such a thing. I haven't found out how successful that is. But sometimes the designers more or less give you a, hey, if you want to build this, come see us and we'll get you the plans for it. Because there is some, well, architects are trying to make money too. So builders, however, we have more than one of these types of builders where they have come in to do this, this process and they have a, a small accessory dwelling unit that they can put in different places all over the city. And we found that to be successful as well.
So that's something that York and I have talked about before and now with the desire to get more ADUs throughout the city that is a goal that we could come up with that system. We don't have that in place today.
I did attend a webinar a couple of months ago about that for a bunch of the regional partners. And so I could share some more information with you about that offline. And they had slides about successes they've seen and also in some cases, underutilization of those plans because a lot of people want their own little flair. And so as soon as you make one change, it's no longer part of that cookie cutter thing.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Great work. Very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And so we'll, it's time for executive session. And we're going to take about five minutes plus travel time with a potential, with potential action. And if you're watching online, don't freak. I just, if you don't come back, just, I just want to remind everyone that we have national night out next week. I'm sorry, in two weeks.
Yeah, a week from Tuesday.
And then our council meeting is going to take next week off. So we'll be, our meeting, our council meeting in two weeks.
Thank you. So we are asking the city council to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with 2,000 grand condo association for a total payment of $197,739.90.
Is there a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Okay, motion section made. Any, any more comment or questions? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Vice President Zerlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, and we'll be meeting in two weeks, uh, two weeks. And national night out is August 5th. No more further business. Meetings adjourned.